All right, the time is 6:00 PM on February 20th, 2018. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order with a roll call please. Ms. Garcia?
Councilwoman Larson?
Here.
Councilwoman Wall?
Here.
Councilman Anderson?
Here.
Councilwoman McGlean?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilridge?
Here.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. As we all know, there's been a lot of tragedy that struck throughout the United States, most recently in Florida. If you could please keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two spreadsheets, big image range.
Item five is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Are there any calls to the public at this time? We did not receive any forms. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak at this time? And closing call to the public. Item six is our public hearing and presentations. Item A is a public hearing on an application received from Kim Kaye at Circle K Stores Incorporated. Store number 3492 liquor license application located at 219 South Main Street in Florence, Arizona for a location transfer license, liquor store, and for council recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license.
Mayor, members of council, we're excited to notify you that this is the new license for the new Circle K store located at 219 South Main Street. This is for a transfer. They're not removing one of their licenses on the current Circle K's. They will continue to sell alcohol at those Circle K's. They are moving it from a different location to the 219 South Main Street so that they can begin serving alcohol there as well. We did post the license in accordance with law, received no comments from the public, and staff is here to recommend that you make an approval to the state liquor license board. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any member of council have questions at this time? I don't see any questions.
We would need to open a public hearing, see if any public comment, and then make a motion to forward a recommendation of approval to the state liquor license board.
Okay, at this time, we're opening the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak regarding this item at this I do not see anyone inclined making closing call to the public for that matter. Would that we need a motion for council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license application located at 219 South Main Street, Florence, Arizona for a location transfer license liquor store.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, and motion carries. Item B is recognition of the 33rd Annual Historic Home Tour Committee, Mr. John Nixon.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. It is indeed my pleasure to come before you and say a few words about our 33rd Annual Home Tour and also the Home Tour Committee. Just a little quick review of the home tour that we had on February 10th. As I said, it was the 33rd Annual Home Tour. It was the town and our department, Community Services Department, and Home Tour Committee's fifth home tour. So each year, we think we get it a little bit better. We tweak it. We get more people to come to Florence. As a matter of fact, the figures from the home tour on the 10th, we sold 951 tickets versus 837 last year and 719 the year before. And there's a number of reasons for that. One of them is our committee, we started meeting earlier and more frequently than we did in the past. We put out publicity and marketing earlier as well. And we also like to think that people are coming back that have been previous years. They had such a good experience that they come back again. So we're quite pleased with that. The home tour, as probably most everybody knows, the success of a home tour just doesn't happen by accident. It takes a lot of planning, a lot of preparation, and a lot of dedication from many, many people besides town staff. And I just want to mention, I would be remiss if I did not mention and thank each year, this year and past year, our homeowners who put their homes up for strangers to walk through for five or six hours on a Saturday. So if I could get council and the audience here today to give a round of applause to our homeowners for home tour, I think we'd really appreciate that. Some of the others involved with the home tour, we had 137 volunteers this year for home tour. We also had people who volunteered as trolley guides, ambassadors as well. So when I say it's a large group effort, that's exactly what I mean. I'd like to narrow down my comments to our Home Tour Committee. And our committee, I can't thank them enough for what they've done and how dedicated they are. They put forth, and I want to get all these words right because they're exactly correct, they put forth a lot of time, expense out of their own pocket many times, their expertise, and probably just as important, if not more, their passion for Florence, for historic Florence, and for the community itself. So what I'd like to do, Mayor, with your permission, is to name the names of our committee members, have them come up, and get a certificate of appreciation. And like I said, I can't thank them enough, but this is a token of our appreciation to our committee members. First one I'd like to call up is Chris Reed. Our other committee members who aren't here, I'd like to mention them if I could. Oh, I'm sorry. And Cynthia Calhoun. Shame on me. That's why I have notes. Our other committee members who could not make it tonight, Brenda Hewitt, Barb Kelly, and Lori Moore. And could I ask for a round of applause for the work these people did?
All right, thank you for your presentation. You have put forth a lot of hard work and effort, as well as the committee members, the homeowners, the volunteers, and thank you for leading that because you do a fabulous job. And as you mentioned, it gets better and better every year.
Thank you.
Any members of council?
Well, I guess I could talk for a long time about the tour because we certainly enjoyed it. You know, Parks Department did an excellent job. I've seen messages this week from people who were on the committees and worked, and they're volunteering to do it again next year. And that says a lot about what's going on. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you very much. All right. Number C, letter C, is recognition of the Maricopa High School Theater Company for their participation in the 33rd Annual Historic Home Tour.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. One thing I wanted to add, in addition to the home tour, we had three little programs as well. We had the Arts and Culture Commission had their Quick Draw Artist Event and Auction Contest. Hotly contested, made some money for the commission. It was a lot of fun to watch that. I watched that for a little while. I enjoyed that. Also, at the Historical Museum, they had the Wild Borough and Horse Program, Inmate Program. And I didn't get over for that, but I saw pictures from it, standing room only. Remarkable response to that program. The last one I do want to mention was our reenactments. The Baron of Arizona. We had reenactments. Last year, if you remember, we did that for the first time. It came out of committee. It wasn't my idea. I'm not that smart. Our committee came up with it for reenactment. Let's reenact something historical about Florence. And we did that last year. It was the Pearl Heart Trial, if any of you remember that. This year, it was the Baron of Arizona. And we were fortunate, very fortunate, to secure the services and commitment from Maricopa High School Theater Group led by their teacher, and I might say Arizona Master Teacher Cindy Calhoun. I'd like her to come up, say a few words, and present certificates to her students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I unfortunately don't have any notes written, but I do want to thank Mr. Nixon and the Historical Home Tour for inviting us. This was a new venue for us to perform in and a new reason for performance, which was always very exciting. I am very proud to say that the reenactment script that was created was entirely student-driven. I gave them the background, the research, and said, "Have fun, figure it out, see what kind of story you can tell." And three of my students were able to make it tonight, and I'd like them to come up. I have Autumn Faust, Antonio Gonzalez, and Tamara Hanania. And as I said, these students were able to really tell the story. Autumn was our lead writer for the script. Antonio played Patrick Holland, who's kind of a Florence legend, I understand. And Tamara Hanania filled out the story, playing a local merchant and business owner and telling the story of these people who were terrified of what was going to happen to them because of James Revis. And as I said, this was a wonderful opportunity for us to have a new venue. My students had a wonderful time and felt so welcomed by everybody in Florence, and we can't thank you enough for that. So thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. And your students put on amazing, amazing performances, and their costumes were right Okay, item D is our fiscal year 2017-2018 second quarter budget presentation. Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My presentation is not nearly as exciting, but we're going to go through it anyways. I wanted to stick with the same format that we had with our first quarter results. And what I'm going to be presenting to you is very similar format, just talking to you about how the results have gone for our revenue and our expenses. One of the staff members asked me, "Are we going to have any surprises in this presentation?" There'll be no surprises in this presentation. It's pretty straightforward. I'm very pleased with how the staff is doing at spending within their budget and below their budget, and that we're collecting more revenue than we were anticipating, which is always a good position to be in. So this forecast is based upon the results of December 31st, 2017. My last presentation at the first quarter results, I had my estimated audited results. These are the actual audited results. As you'll notice, the results for the general fund, we added $1.1 million to the general fund. HERF, we overspent our revenue because we were using the HERF bond. Per the council's direction, we obtained the HERF bond. We were spending that down. Water, we collected more than we spent. Sewer, we collected more than we spent. And then sanitation, per the council's direction, we are slowly spending down the sanitation fund balance that's available. General fund revenue, as I've talked to you previously, I did not want to go and forecast every single revenue source. For example, we get donations for the dog park. That'd be like $15. It would be a poor use of time to talk about $15. So I focus on our key six revenue sources. These revenues make up 77% of the revenue for the general fund. So if these six are doing well, then we have a good sense that the rest of the general fund is doing well. They are city sales tax, property tax, building permits, state shared sales tax, state shared income tax, and auto-lude tax. One of the things you'll notice is most of those taxes are state shared revenues. They're coming, the taxes are collected, sent to the state, and then the state disperses those based upon our population and under other factors. Only a couple of those are really impacted because of what Florence is doing within its town limits. Okay, this is the general fund. What you have in the first column is the title of the revenue source. The second one is the budget. The third one is the results as of December 31st, 2017. And the fourth one is the forecast for the remainder of the year. You may notice that the property tax probably is going to come in a little higher than we anticipated, which is good. Building permits, I believe, are going to exceed what we have budgeted, which is good news also because we know that homes are being built within our town limits. State sales tax is coming in a little higher than we were anticipating. State income tax is right in line, and auto-lude tax is a little bit below. But that is balanced out by the anticipated higher revenue in the other areas. Now, this is the general fund expense. So we wrap all the departments together. Their budget is $14.5 million. As of June 30th, 2017, we've spent about $6.5 million, and the forecast is to be about $13.5. Keep in mind that some of our expenditures don't happen, thank you very much, don't happen on a monthly basis. Some of them are at the beginning of the year, and some of them are at the end of the year. As an example, we have to pay Arizona Department of Revenue about $52,000 in order to meet our obligation for the current contract. That happens at the beginning of the year, and then we don't have that expense the rest of the year. Next one is, this is a focus on other funds and their major revenue sources. Again, I didn't list every revenue for all of these other funds because these revenue sources here are the major revenues that guide really how that particular fund is doing. You'll notice that the general capital, the budget committee said, "Joe, this is a problem. We've only collected $200,000, but yet you're still projecting $1.2 million." Well, the reason is because of the timing of this revenue. The general capital funds major revenue sources from state share, city sales tax, excuse me, city sales tax. And city sales tax does not come in, if I go to Circle K today and I buy a soft drink and I pay my sales tax, that sales tax does not show up in the town's coffers the next day. It takes time for it to get processed, and so there's a delay. And so in order to understand how this revenue is doing, I did a comparison of three years and the pattern over three years. And I noticed trends within those multiple years, and I used those trends in order to make estimates for what my forecast is. HERF, I'm anticipating we're going to collect a little bit less than we budgeted. Construction tax, I'm anticipating we're going to collect as much as we budgeted. Water fund, a little higher than we budgeted. Sewer fund, a little less than we budgeted. And then the sanitation, a little bit more. And partly in sanitation is because as new homes get constructed within our town boundaries, we're adding new clients onto the list. Next one is other funds expenses. This is, so you'll notice again, budget spent so far, and then the forecast. You may be a little concerned about the general capital fund and the fact that we've only spent $8,286 as of December 31st, 2017. The reason why is we're still in the process of making sure that we are going to procure properly each of the capital items that we had budgeted for. In addition, $100,000 of the general capital fund was to be spent on the intersection of SR 79 and Hunt Highway. And we know due to ADOT's direction, that project will not go through this fiscal year. And so we anticipate we're not going to spend that money. We're budgeting again for it next year because it's our anticipation that that project will make some progress in that direction. No other major highlights from these other expenses. And that covers the presentation.
Joe, when you mentioned that you went back three years with the numbers, are we right about where we were in prior years? Do you have those numbers?
I don't have them offhand. I apologize. When I come and give presentations about the budget, I will bring previous years. One of the challenges that I faced as I've looked at my forecast in previous fiscal years is in 1617, the town of Florence's population was estimated to be 30,000-plus. And so we collected more revenue than we actually should have been collecting. And so that is one challenging factor. And so we're collecting less than we did last fiscal year, but we're collecting within the range that I anticipate or I viewed in previous fiscal years. One of the things that I have in my office is I have a spreadsheet that shows me the actual collections and revenue and the actual expenditures for six years. And so I'm always looking at those six-year patterns. How are we doing in comparison to those six years? I'm not going to bring six years of data and put it up on the screen because it's too much information. So that's why I went for the month-to-month analysis for those last three years to try and see the ebb and flow. In addition, even though we collected more money in 1617, the timing of that money is the same because they are delayed revenue sources, the state shared revenue and the city sales tax. So I can see the trend, even though the dollar amounts may be slightly different. Again, I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing because, one, we're spending less than we're budgeting, and we're collecting more than we budgeted. And so I anticipate at the end of the fiscal year, if we continue on this plan, that again we'll be adding money to our fund balances in water, sewer, and most importantly for me, general fund.
All right, council, are there any questions?
Good job, Joe.
Thank you, councilwoman.
That means a lot coming from councilmember McGlean.
I absolutely agree. I'm going to write that in my journal.
So thank you very much. Great presentation. Our next presentation is item E, and that is the presentation on the Town of Florence Planning Assistance for Rural Area Study. Mr. Chris Salas.
I was looking at Mark to make sure he was in the audience before I said this because I'm going to refer to Mark. Mark comes and interviews me every year in December, sometime through the middle of December, and he asks me a whole lot of questions about what's going to happen in the next year and what happened in the previous year. And this year, I believe, Mark asked me 13 questions. And one of the questions, I believe it was question number five, was about planning. And was the town going to be doing some planning in the forthcoming 12 months? And I told Mark, "Get ready, Mark, because we're going to set some kind of record in the next 12 months for amount of planning efforts to be undertaken by the town." Some of those are required by law. Some of those needed to be updated. One of those has to do with our regional transportation plan. The last time a regional transportation plan was done by Florence, it was a joint effort between Florence and Coolidge in 2008. Well, we applied for a grant from ADOT in 2017, and we're awarded that grant. It's called PARA, Planning Assistance for Rural Areas. And I'm happy to report that not only were we awarded that grant, but ADOT has selected a consultant to perform that work, and we started the project today. So this afternoon, we spent an afternoon with ADOT and the consultant that was selected for the job, Michael Baker, and had a big kickoff meeting to collect information and have conversations regarding the scope of work, schedule, et cetera. So today starts a schedule that's going to last for the next 12 months to put together our transportation plan, functional classifications, routes to be widened, requirements for future development in terms of cross-sections and engineering standards. With us tonight are two very important members of the project team. Jason, who's with ADOT, so if you want to throw tomatoes at ADOT, Jason's here to accept those tonight, but he's the wrong guy. He's a super friendly guy, and he's here to help us, and he's here tonight. He's with the planning group. And then Kevin Kugler, who is our consultant lead with Michael Baker. And so they have a short presentation for us this evening. It looks like we're on the question slide for Joe's presentation. So will somebody from IT help me find the right presentation? Okay. And I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Okay. Okay. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, excited to be here. As Brent said, my name is Jason Bocian. I am with the Multimodal Planning Division of ADOT. And I was just going to give a brief overview of the PARA program and then turn it over to Kevin, who's going to do most of the work for the next 12 months. So PARA program, Planning Assistance for Rural Areas, it's a program that ADOT has administered off and on for about the last 10 years. When we have the budget for it, we had a budget for it for FY '18, and so we did a call for projects. Last April and May, we received 23 applications with about $3 million in requests, and we had about $900,000 to work with. And so we were able, out of the 23 applications, to award just five studies. And so Florence, the town of Florence, excuse me, was awarded that study, and it is to update your transportation plan. So we're excited to work with the town and move this along. Like we said, we got this started today, so.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure to be here, along with my colleague Tristan Black and my other colleagues back at the office. We are extremely excited to embark with you all on this journey with ADOT and the town of Florence. We come with a considerable amount of experience in the area and statewide, having done community and transportation plans for over 26 years personally. So we're excited to be here. Brent did a good job of setting the table with respect to the merits of the project and why we're here. I'm going to give you a brief overview of what the introduction of the project, some of the goals and objectives, and a brief review of the work and the scope. Jason touched on the fact that the PARA program is funding the study. And congratulations to Florence's staff because there was 23 or so applications to ADOT, and Florence was only one of five of the planning studies that were selected. So outstanding job by your staff to put forward a quality application that got recognition. With respect to the purpose and need of the project, the transportation study analyzes, as Brent said, the roadway network, the rideaway, functional classifications, development patterns, and does transportation and travel demand modeling to determine what your existing and future conditions and needs will be. As Brent noted, the last transportation plan was last updated in 2008 and was a collaborative effort with Coolidge. And a lot has changed since then, a recession and changes in the development patterns amongst other things. Now is the time to really freshen the plan and really start from scratch and develop something that you can have for the years to come. The town of Florence will help determine, the study will help determine transportation policies and strategies, including access management along the way, and it'll help lay the groundwork and sync up with your infrastructure improvement plan update that you all are currently in progress on as well. As Brent mentioned, we met today as a study team. There is a technical advisory committee meeting, technical advisory committee that is comprised of multiple different agencies, including yourselves, of course, and others like Pinell County, and others that work in function in transportation to help oversee the consultant and ADOT's efforts. And through those discussions, we've come up with a series of project goals and objectives that we wanted to introduce you to and formulate it. There's nine of them here, so. So the first one is to update the transportation plan with Florence and ADOT for, and to, and really important to underscore the fact of collaborating and being consistent with what is going on in Pinell County and syncing up the two plans for continuity and consistency, particularly with respect to roadway networks. Identify, this plan will identify and recommend short-term, medium-term, and long-term plans of improvements. And short, medium, and long is usually zero to five years, five to 10, and 10-plus years in terms of short, medium, and long. Develop roadway cross-sections that are consistent with Pinell County and their roads of regional significance plan. We're going to help you develop planning-level cost estimates for each of those recommended roadway types, so you'll have a sense moving forward whether it's improvements you all are doing or working collaboratively with the development community to get a cost estimate as to, okay, this type of road should cost approximately X to develop. I already mentioned that we'll have some access management policies that the town can be comfortable with. And the town would like the ability to have a standalone travel demand model in-house to perform future modeling as the need arises. We're going to utilize the results of the deliverables of the study for, to really turn this plan into the circulation element of your forthcoming general plan update, anticipated later, I think in 2018. As Brent said, you're going to do a lot of different planning exercises this year and next. So this will help fold perfectly into that. The timing is perfect. We're going to incorporate multimodal policies that facilitate locations into the transportation framework. And of course, throughout the way, we're going to obtain stakeholder and advisory committee input early and often into the process. It really makes for a better plan. The more, more folks we hear from, the better. So real briefly, the study area, it's a little washed out on this slide, I apologize, but you know this better than I. The study area simply is everything within the planning area with a little bit of a sharper focus on everything within the municipal limits at about 62 square miles, and of course, including the periphery of the, of the planning area. Synopsis of the work plan, there's a total of 13 tasks throughout the work plan that begin really with our meetings that we had today. The TAC is the Technical Advisory Committee meeting. We had that this afternoon, as Brent mentioned. Task three is here tonight, providing you all a briefing as to what the parameters of the project are and what to expect. And then we'll move forward with additional meetings and working papers that I can explain in the next couple of slides, real briefly. Is developing the work plan, today's kickoff meeting, tonight's council meeting briefing. That, that covers tasks one through three. But really getting to the meat and potatoes is what ADOT likes to call a working paper number one, that really explores the current and future conditions relative to existing roadway, traffic behavior, crashes, development patterns, topography, so on and so forth. But in the, the structure of that working paper breaks down, as you see on the slide before you, with an introduction. We'll talk a lot about public and stakeholder involvement and really break down those current and future conditions on those topics that I just briefly mentioned. So as we put that together, we will then come back to the Technical Advisory Committee, as I mentioned there, there to provide our guidance, guidance and oversight to ADOT and us as the consultant team to really scrub that working paper and evaluate that and make suggested changes and edits. And then we come back, roll it into what's called working paper number two, which is where we will develop a series of evaluation criteria of which to measure and rank, ultimately rank, different types of projects against each other to prioritize with, with your assistance, of course, as counsel and the public to guide us through that. So we'll have that evaluation criteria and what ADOT calls the Plan of Improvements, which is aptly named because it describes the types of transportation projects, again, short, medium, and long-term projects that are likely to come out of the plan. So that's where a lot of the heavy lifting is done, is in working paper number two, where we will develop, as Brent mentioned, standard cross-sections, and we'll model through fancy transportation modeling programs, the operations and performance of both your current conditions and the future projected conditions based on the development patterns of some of your larger PUDs and such. Moving on, task number seven, we'll come back and review that, that second working paper with that evaluation criteria and those Plan of Improvements. And the advisory committee will let us know that, A, we either hit the target, or B, we missed it, and what adjustments we need to make, which is, which is pretty typical. And then once we have all the, we have the luxury of all that information, the current, the future conditions, the, the draft Plan of Improvements, we will then roll that out for public consumption at our first public meeting to review that. We will bring those considerations forward, all that feedback we get from the public, and make, incorporate those into the draft final report, which has a recommended alternatives, those planning-level cost estimates and phasing and funding recommendations. And then once we've incorporated that into that final plan, we will come back and have a second public meeting to roll out what those final recommendations are to not only yourselves, but the public as well. The last couple items on the scope include a public involvement summary, basically any and all comments that we receive from, from you all, the TAC members, the stakeholders, any stakeholders at large, will be included in a comprehensive summary report, and then we will develop that final report and provide you a GIS deliverable file for, for staff to work with moving forward. So if you're wondering how that translates into a schedule, just real briefly, Brent kind of hit it on the head, it's a, it's a basically a 12-month project. Those different tasks that I identified there, we're here tonight in February. The next three months, we'll go back to the drawing board and create that working paper. We'll have our second advisory committee meeting in June. And then from the months of June through roughly September, prepare the second working paper that I've mentioned. And the, the third Technical Advisory Committee meeting would be in September, and then followed shortly by the first public meeting, of which you're probably most interested in, would be likely at the end of September, first part of October, with the second public meeting being kind of in that soft spot, as I like to call it, after Thanksgiving and sometime before Christmas, not too close to the holidays, we know how that works, so. And then after that public meeting, finishing up the report by the end of January of 2019. So with, that's a real brief introduction, and I wanted to not take too much of your time and entertain any questions you'd have. So with respect to the next steps, tonight, we're obviously here briefing town council on the project and the process itself. We're going to begin and continue that data collection process, working closely with your staff, and then begin to prepare working paper number one with those current and future conditions that I mentioned. So myself or Jason are available for any questions you might have of us, and certainly appreciate your time, Mayor and Councilmembers, and looking forward to this journey together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you have any questions for ADOT at this time? We're, we're very thankful, first of all, that you took the time to come out to our, to our meeting, first of all. Let me just express that, as well as the working relationship that has been communicated from our town manager in regards to how well we're all working together. So that's very much appreciated. All right. Other than that, it doesn't look like we have any in-depth questions, but I'm sure, you know, as projects arise, we're, have a lot of comments.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is unfinished business, which is Item A. This is the Discussion Approval and Disapproval of Mayor Walter and Vice Mayor Woolridge to Attend the National League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,719.08. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, Members of Council, as you will remember, on February 5th, council did table this item to the current meeting. Staff did go back in and compare travel costs based on the timing. There was an adjustment of $334.96 that is to be expected. Also to report that if council does approve this item, there will not be a staff member attending the conference. If you have any other questions, please let me know.
Can you repeat what you said? I didn't hear that over the door.
I said, I said that if council does approve this item, there will not be a staff member attending along with council.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Is there any member of council that has a question regarding this item? Councilmember Wall.
Originally, when this item was presented to the council, I was skeptical. I had a lot of questions. And since that meeting, I've had a chance to dig a little deeper into what the conference entails. I've also had an opportunity to talk with other councils, other towns' council members who have expressed to me the value of the conference. And I think that as long as we're going to be getting a full report, and as long as our mayor and vice mayor are fully engaged with our politicians and other council members from throughout the U.S., I am more than willing to support this request.
Thank you.
Yes, I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for the Town of Florence to send representatives to the national conference. I think there's a lot of things that we need to learn from the outside, outside of the state of Arizona, and I'm fully supporting your efforts.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no additional comments or questions, could I please have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Tara Walter and Vice Mayor Valerie Woolridge to attend the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, D.C. in an amount not to exceed $5,719.08.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and multiple seconds. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Resolution number 1656-18, which is the adoption of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, authorizing the town manager to submit an application for the Arizona Department of Transportation 5310 grant, which provides funding to service the elderly and persons with disabilities in the community. Item B is acceptance of funds from Arizona Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $88,000 for overtime wages, benefits, and vehicle mileage to conduct Operation Stone Garden border enforcement activities. Item C is the approval of the January 2nd, January 22nd, and January 29th, 2018 Town Council Regular and Work Session Meeting Minutes. And Item D is to receive and file the following boards and commission minutes, December 14th, 2017, and January 18th, 2018 Arts and Culture Commission Meeting Minutes. Does any member of council wish to have any item removed at this time? Any member of the public? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. 9A, New Business, Appointment of Dana Breddvig to the Industrial Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2020.
Mayors and members of council, as you know, the Clerk's Office is currently in the process of accepting applications for a variety of positions. This was an application that came in, so we were able to put it forward to council for appointment. We did make contact with the IDA. IDA concurred with this appointment. And so as per council's request, this was added to new business, so it can be discussed on the floor.
Does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss or any questions at this time? I would like to say thank you for applying and stepping up to serve in this capacity. We really appreciate when citizens, you know, engage in the process, and we have additional openings on other boards and commissions as well, so if you're interested, you can always apply. See Ms. Lisa Garcia. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Dana Breddvig to the IDA.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item B is the Discussion Approval and Disapproval of Accepting the Resignation of Georgianne Cochran from the Arts and Culture Commission. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Again, per council's request, we are placing these items on new business so that they can be discussed. The Clerk's Office will, after council accepts the resignation, will continue to advertise for all vacant seats on boards and commissions.
Okay. Is there any discussion at this time? All right. With a motion, please.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Georgianne Cochran from the Arts and Culture Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item C is a motion directing staff to commence the development agreement, the DA negotiations with Alchemy LLC and other associated parties that may enter a DA with the Town of Florence for the proposed development of a biogas operation. They are unable to make it today, so Mr. Billingsley had stated we can either approve this item or table it because they will be presenting at our next meeting.
Absolutely correct. We have been, staff has been discussing a potential project here in the Town of Florence for, wow, the last four months, I would say. It has been known as Project Hydrogen. That was its economic development name. We have recently received an application for development agreement and let council know about that and have received a check, applying to start the negotiation process. Unfortunately, the main person involved in this enterprise had a grand opening at a new business today in the valley and was unable to come tonight. So good for him, that he has a grand opening on a successful business, bad for us because he couldn't be here. Once again, for those folks in the audience and on TV, this is not to approve a development agreement, this is to approve the ability to, for the town staff to negotiate a potential development agreement. The project itself is a biofuel facility that would utilize our waste stream from our wastewater treatment plants for a positive purpose.
All right.
I'm available to answer any questions if there are any.
Any member of the council have questions? Councilmember Anderson.
As you know, I've done some background check on this, this, and this is a startup company. And if you look them up on the Google and look at their Buzz file, which I found out, it's, the company's two years old, they've got one employee, their sales last year was $55,000. So I just want to make sure that we do our diligence to check their financial background. I don't know if we can get a surety bond or something like that.
At this time, councilmember, there are no financial commitments, so we wouldn't need one. We did talk to them today, and I brought up your concern. He said, make sure that we get the spelling right and that we get the proper website. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, it's A-K-E-M-E-Tech, T-E-C-H, dot com, I believe is, huh?
ALA.
ALA?
ALK.
ALK. A-L-K-E-M-E-Tech, dot com. They assured me that they have more than one employee. They, they have multiple plants of this type that they manage overseas. But they're a startup company. This is not just a facility to produce gas. This is an R&amp;D and training facility as well. So they will be here at the next meeting to give a presentation no matter what. So if there are any more questions, I'll answer them. If not, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Not Councilmember Billingsley. Oh, my goodness.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
So in commencing a developmental agreement, tell me, for the audience purposes, what does that entail and what obligations does that commit us to if we proceed with that?
Staff time. Staff time to start a negotiation. Unlike some of the other development agreements we've negotiated, these folks that are startups, we, we take kind of a hands-off approach. We do a lot of listening, we do a lot of supporting, we do a lot of understanding, but we haven't committed anything to this project at this point. We need to understand what they expect, what they need, and more importantly, want to make sure that they have funding for their project. So I am happy to report that last week, we actually had a meeting, and they've received their funding to construct the project. So now is the time to start those, those negotiations because they have money to construct a project now. They're actually funded out of Europe, out of England, and they have a partner stateside that I can't mention at this time because it's, it's their proprietary information, but the partner that they're working with, you will notice, they're a big deal in Arizona.
All right. And what would your recommendation be to council at this time?
I would recommend that you allow us to start negotiation because we haven't committed to anything yet. We need to see how serious they are and what we can do to advance the project. It's really exciting that they have It's really exciting that they have funding for the projects and that they've provided us a funding letter, so. And it's not backed by, by the LLC, it's backed by the funding entity, which is a development company.
All right, thank you. Are there any members of council that have any additional questions? All right, with that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion directing staff to commence development agreement negotiations with Alkemi LLC and other associated parties.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is our manager's report.
Look out, it's a thick stack tonight. I'll go through them as quick as I can, but it's good when it's a thick stack because we provide good information, happy stuff on the manager's report, so. First off, I have a couple people that I would like to call up. The first one is Mr. Nikolai Zawekar, if you would come up. I think all the council members got an opportunity to talk to Nikolai last week, and I talked to a couple of you because you called me after one stopped by in person and one of them called me and said, "Who was the nice young man that called me that said he was calling me under the authority of the Clerk's Office?" So, this is Nikolai. He is our intern, our exchange student from, from Germany, and he is studying in Germany to get a degree in, in public administration, and the crazy guy wants to be a city manager someday. So, he's having a lot of fun, yet last week was his first week. He started on Wednesday, and due to the flu epidemic that's going on at Town Hall, we haven't had any employees for a couple weeks. And Nikolai was a member of the Clerk's Office last week and, and in good standing. He was, he was working hard. He hit the ground running. If you're wondering on TV or in the audience how we, how we were lucky enough to have Nikolai here, I, I watched a presentation two years ago from a student from Germany that was assigned to do an internship with the city of Camp Verde. And at that presentation, the young lady said, "We have the need to place more students from Germany, and this has been such a great experience. Would any of you be interested?" And I went and signed up with her and said, "Hey, Florence would be very interested." It's been a long haul to get to this point. We had to get him a visa and go through the German government. I'm sure it's been harder for him, but we had to develop a curriculum because it's literally a class. This is a class. Every day he works with Florence, and so we have to evaluate him. There are deadlines he has to meet, there are projects he has to complete. We had to work out a whole curriculum like a schoolteacher would specifically for, for Nikolai, and we're very pleased to have him. Thanks goes out to the Parks and Rec team, the community services team, because we were able to find him a living arrangement here and, and some good friends, and I'm going to turn it over to Nikolai to say a few words.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, being here. I really like it. Being here, the work is so much fun, and, yeah, the people are also very friendly. What makes it easy for me to arrive here and don't get homesick. So, I think it's going to be a great opportunity for me, and I know how much work it was for Brent to get me here. So, I wanted to say thank, thank you, Brent, for doing this much stuff. And, yeah, now I'm here till 17th of May, and I want to do the best job I can do.
Thank you, Nikolai. Appreciate it. And John, he's an avid fisherman, so you ought to talk to him because I'm sure he'd like to take a ride on your boat. I'm going to take him fishing while he's here, too.
We'll work it out.
And he wants to go to Bass Pro Shop if you want to make a run.
We can do that.
Second, I, I'd like to introduce Ben Bitter. Today is Ben's first day. Come on up, Ben. Ben is very familiar to Pinal County, served in Pinal County for quite a number of years, including over six and a half years with the city of Casa Grande. He started today as the assistant to the town manager here in Florence. He has a bachelor's degree from Brigham Young University and a master's from Arizona State, and is, is very experienced in local government, and is, in fact, his past job was as a city manager in Kentucky. So, Ben, wow him.
I'm just thrilled to be here, thrilled to work with a great staff. You know, as Brent mentioned, was a city manager in Kentucky and had a great experience there and got to help a community and got to take some time afterwards and become a dad and, and really focus on my family and able to, to sit and wait for the right opportunity, and this was it for me and my family. So, we're excited to, to be here and excited to get to work and, and help Florence as best we can and do whatever we can to do that. You got it?
Next item. When everybody walked in tonight, did you walk by our brand-new radar trailer? Yay! Thanks again to our grant staff for an excellent job. I think that was a Governor's Office Highway Safety Grant Award. This is our second functional one, right? We have a third one that doesn't work, so we have two that work now. Very good. So, I'm sure that we're going to get some requests to place that bad boy. So, we're very excited. It also has a speed sensor that, that collects data, as, as well as the ability for violator alerts, et cetera. The, the battery pack is supposed to last between eight and 10 days, and of course, it has solar powers to, solar panels to extend that range. So, one of the things that I'm very happy that this unit, I'm told, can do is collect information for speed studies because from time to time, we get complaints and say, "Folks are speeding on the street." We should be able to place this unit and, and actually do a speed study with the internal components. So, excited to get that, and, and I'm going to say it on behalf of Chris, but thank you very much, PD, for, when you applied for that grant, thinking about how it could be functional in other departments as well. We, we appreciate it. Right, Chris? All right. I wanted to say a few things about the very successful event that was held this last Saturday. I'm very proud to say that the Town of Florence cooperated with our Chamber of Commerce on the car show event this weekend. And although I was unable to attend, I was, I was entertaining my 92-year-old grandmother this weekend who came to visit me from Colorado, so I did not come. She wouldn't have been able to walk and check out the cars and what have you, so we did lots of hanging out. But there was a total of 111 cars registered, I'm told, both sides of the street, for most of the Main Street, and there's nods in the audience from those folks that attended. And the Chamber estimates that over 1,000 people attended, and I've had a couple of council members that have actually come in, talked to me, and said, "What a great event it was," and, and that we need to do more like that. So, super cool to have a joint event with the Chamber and have it be successful, and thank you to everybody who attended and, and made that successful, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, if you guys are watching, for, for all your hard work. This was, I know, your dream, and, and we're able to work together to make that dream a reality. If, if you would deliver that on to those folks, Jen, that'd be great. I got a thank you here from Julie, that might be Nixon. Is John still here? This might be John's wife? I don't, it's not. Thanking us for a large training that we hosted at the Library and Community Center that was for all of the school districts in Pinal County. Apparently, it was their best, best event ever. The people at the front desk, our maintenance staff, our, our team, making that rental, rental was great, and, and she wanted me to pass on that she can't thank us enough, so thank you, Brian, to your team. I also have a letter here that was sent to Chief Strayer from an individual. It says, "Chief Strayer, I want to extend my appreciation to your department, specifically Chris Robinson and his crew, for providing exceptional care to my 86-year-old mother." I'll keep her name out. She's visiting from Illinois for the winter and went to Florence to visit her sister for a couple of weeks. On February 1st, she took a fall, she hit her head, she suffered from a couple of lacerations. She's also on blood thinners, but thanks to our team, they were able to stop, stop her bleeding and to help her out, including transport to the hospital. So, thank you much. I know that's our job, and we do that on a daily basis, but it's really nice to be recognized by folks, so keep those emails coming to, to thanks the town employees for the things that they do. Dave, you might have to help me with this one, but apparently, we've been selected as an NOAA Weather Ready Nation Ambassador. You want to tell us what that is?
That, that is a partnership with the, the weather agency just to help them continue to develop their program and then to get alerts out to the community in, in weather emergencies.
Lastly, did you know that February is Love Your Library Month? I did not. Thank you very much, Brian. Apparently, this is the 21st Annual National Library Week, and there is another bookmark design contest, which I know my kids were involved in last year. The contest runs from January 12th to March 1st, and the winners will be announced on a ceremony on April 6th. So, it takes, takes a while to judge those bad boys, takes over a month. Secondarily, we're going to have a local author panel at the library Thursday, February 22nd, 3:00 p.m. Library patrons will have the ability to meet three different authors that are based in Pinal County, talk to them about their books and their pathways to publication and their upcoming works. And lastly, I'll be there. Well, maybe I won't be there. My wife will be there. The Pooch Party is going to be held at the Central Bark Park Saturday, February 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and onsite, not only will our new playground improvements from the grant be present, but Pinal County Animal Care and Control will be there to vaccinate dogs, do licensing, and will make animals available for adoption. So, please come on down to the Bark for Your Park event at the Central Dog Park. That's all I have.
Thank you. Remember last time when you said I took everything that you were going to say?
Oh, sorry.
You just did that to me tonight. So, good job. Thanks for spreading the word of all the great things that are happening in town. All right, we have our closing call to the public. Is there any member of the public at this time that has anything that they would like to say? And closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only at this time. Councilmember Larson.
I just want to echo everything that Brent said. I love hearing reports like that. I also want to welcome our new staff members, both temporary and permanent, semi-permanent, yeah. So, we appreciate you guys being here and choosing to be in Florence. I also love that they are bringing new ideas and new perspectives to not only the policy we do, but our daily operations. I think that all of that helps lift us up to do, you know, a better job. So, I appreciate it, and I love everything, like I said, Brent said, so that's all I have for night.
Councilmember Wall?
Ditto what Kristen just said. Welcome to Ben and Nikolai. We're glad you're here with us. The car show was amazing. I saw only pictures of it, and the look down Main Street was awesome. I mean, it looked like something you would see in a much bigger town, and everyone that I've heard from was very impressed with the effort that went into it. I know the Chamber spent many months planning for it, and they were very appreciative of the cooperation with the town. So, thank you to all those involved. From a personal perspective, I had the pleasure of being one of the judges for the Pinal County Spelling Bee last Friday, and there were over 60 young people, I believe, from the grades five through eight participating in that. And when we finally got through 12 rounds of words, we narrowed it down to a young lady from Skyline Ranch K through eight, which is part of the Florence Unified School District, which we didn't even know as judges until it was all over. But all of the kids were fantastic. They had obviously practiced for the event, and they were very poised and well-spoken, and I think many of them learned some new words, but most of them did a fantastic job of spelling. I'm so glad that we're promoting this kind of activity in our schools. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I just think I owe Nikolai an apology. When he called me the other day, I had received a call just minutes before with a heavy accent saying he was from Microsoft and he was going to fix my computer. And then I get a call from, from the second guy, he's got an accent, said he's from the town of Florence, and I said, "Where?" And he said, "The Town of Florence, calling from the Clerk's Office. Your book is ready." And I said, "Okay." But I, I was just about to hit the block call button. And I do want to recognize again the home tour. It was a fantastic home tour. This is, I think, the third year I've been to it, and each year, I learn a little bit more about our town. We have a great town here, we have a lot of history, and we have a lot to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Galen?
Just, I attended both car shows, one in Yente, which I thought was fun, too, because, of course, they had a little bit older crowd there, but they had equally a large number of vehicles. It was private, but it was still open to the public, and it was a lot of fun, but it was wonderful seeing the whole Main Street closed down with all the people walking up and down in cars and just noticing that it seems like during these cooler months, how active it is down here. It's just too bad we don't have it. But it was really nice, and I heard your speech from, which was great. Thank you for representing the town like that, and just welcome to the new staff also.
That was actually a last-minute Wendy found me, and her and Jeff Kramer said, "You know, you're from the Town of Florence, you're the mayor, would you say a few words?" And then they allowed me to draw the 50/50 raffle, so it was a lot of fun. Vice Mayor Woolridge?
I'll just ditto what everyone else has said, and then I would like to thank Dana for volunteering to be on the IDA. And just remember, citizens, we have other openings, and we really appreciate you spending your time and volunteering your time and your expertise to our boards and commissions. And welcome to the new staff members as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel that everything was covered. Oh, my goodness, Councilmember Hawkins, that's what happens when I don't check off my list. I apologize.
No, that's all right. Everybody's pretty much covered everything I was going to say. I'd just like to also let Georgianne Cochran, that was on the Arts and Culture Commission, know how much the town appreciated her. She helped us get it going and off the ground, and was a real asset to the committee. And I just, I hope we're blessed next winter with the weather we've had this winter for all of our events, because this is the first year I can remember that every major event we've had this winter has just been gorgeous. I mean, we've really lucked out because in the past, we haven't been always that lucky, and I appreciate everybody that's put time and effort into all of our projects for the community, because it's giving us more exposure all the time. And I heard as many compliments this weekend on the town as I've ever heard at any of our events. I mean, people were really impressed with the, the car show, and of course, the home tour was also a great success, and people were really happy about that. It was, we're just, we're really blessed this year, I think. Thank you. Oh, and then welcome our new staff, of course, but it's been said.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hawkins. First, I want to say thank you to council for allowing Vice Mayor and I to go to Washington. We will be looking forward to the activities, the events, the trainings, bringing everything back and presenting it to council in an open forum so the public has knowledge of what we gleaned from that as well. Welcome to our two new employees and intern. And if you want to go to the Bass Pro Shop, we can definitely arrange that. There's also, you know, there's MAG, Maricopa Association of Governments that we're a part of, and CAG, so if you want to join me for one of those meetings or a few of them, I'm happy to bring you out to them. They are, some in the evening, some in the morning, just depends. But we'll make sure that you have all of the, all of the meetings and trainings, as well as there's some boards and commissions that we all sit on, so if you'd like an opportunity to participate in that as well, we'll make sure you have that information. We've had some amazing events going on in the Town of Florence. There's literally something to do every single weekend. So, in February, we're not done with February yet, there's more. And wait until March 31st when we have the Road to Country Thunder. You are in for a treat, son. Okay, so we are going to be going into executive session. So we are going to be going into executive session. This is a quite lengthy executive session. We will be coming out to adjourn at the end. So with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.